Welcome to the Committee of the Whole, Suyus Town Council, February the fifteenth, two thousand and sixteen. And we will call the meeting to order. Are there any late items to be added? No, thank you. So this morning, we are very fortunate to have four delegations and interesting things for us to listen to and pay attention to. So the first is the group from the school, presentation of the Suyus Secondary Students. And we're very happy to welcome the principal, Mike Safick, teacher Peter Geida, and the students Hannah, Julia, Emma, Jasdeep, and Gurlaal. And they are going to do a little presentation on something quite exciting. I think they have been in the finals for a Samsung Solve for Tomorrow contest. So please inform us of what you're doing and how we can help. And I think Hannah's going to speak. Am I correct? Thank you Hannah.
Good morning Mayor McCordoff and Town Councillors. My name is Hannah Shields and I'm a Grade eleven student at a Suyus Secondary School. I appear before you today as representative of our Samsung Solve for Tomorrow team. As I hope you are aware, our school has been chosen as one of the semifinalists in this contest. Last fall, our class was selected as one of the fifty-five semifinalists from over seven hundred applicants. We are now competing against five other B.C. schools for a chance to win twenty thousand dollars in classroom technology. And if successful, we hope to go on to compete in the final phase for two grand prizes of fifty thousand dollars in additional classroom technology. The original submission from our biology teacher, Mr. Geida, was related to an existing challenge faced by our community, water conservation. Our goal is to use science, technology, engineering, and math, also known as STEM, to help our community by researching, developing, and presenting possible solutions to this ongoing concern. We are using the Solve for Tomorrow Challenge to inspire ourselves and other young people about the possibilities of STEM and to hope to encourage young students to reach their full potential and strengthen our community. I'm here today to update you on our research and ideas so far and to encourage you to help in our project with our ideas and questions. We are very aware that the town has set a goal of reducing water consumption in the community by one-third. But we are also aware that we still have over ten percent to go to help this town reach the goal. We attended the Suyus Lake Water Quality Forum this past fall and recognized that the water conservation and the quality of the lake are essential to Canada's warmest welcome. Our group has used the concept we learned in Biology eleven as well as our research into the stage water restrictions, as well as just tossing out ideas, then researching them on our new Samsung tablet to come up with ideas we would like to pursue for our project. Firstly, we would like to examine how people are using the staged watering system in town. We are aware from our studies and research that many plants do not need six hours of watering, and watering in the early morning is the best. We hope to develop an experiment that will clearly demonstrate to residents that they could set up their automatic sprinkler systems for shorter but specific lengths of times. This way, they could use less water. Hopefully, they are aware that simply catching water into an empty tuna can to measure sprinkler output would show you that three-fourths, two and one inch of water is enough to apply each time you irrigate. Secondly, we are very excited to try to develop a system, an app, that will adjust the automatic watering systems based on an analysis of current and recent temperature and wind conditions. We know that watering during windy conditions leads to more evaporation and that if it has rained, there is really no need to irrigate. Our goal is to research and develop an app that will adjust overnight watering patterns by examining data by, say, the Weather Network or another app, or another climatology reporting site that will work with it. Our last efforts will center around education. We hope to develop an information component discussing ways that we as individuals could reduce water consumption in the community. Most residents are probably not aware that leaving lawn clippings on your grass cools the ground and holds in moisture, or that adjusting your lawnmower to a height of one point five to two inches will allow taller grass to shade the roots and will allow soils to better retain moisture than short grass. As well, we have discovered that while fertilizers promote plant growth, they also increase water consumption. We would encourage residents to apply the minimum amount of fertilizer needed. Within the house, we will encourage everyone to keep a pitcher of drinking water in their refrigerator instead of running the tap. This way, every drop goes down you and not the drain. We are so excited to be named as one of the semifinalist schools in our province for the Samsung Solve for Tomorrow Challenge. As students, we are motivated to work on a real-world problem to help the community and the school. And this initiative is inspiring us. If you have any other ideas or questions, we would be glad to hear them. This concludes my comments, Mayor McCordoff.
Well, thank you very much Hannah, and you've come up with some great ideas. And I understand that somebody from the school had picked up on the fact that my suggestion way back, which my children thought was hilarious, was to take three-minute showers. And I understand that it was suggested that the egg timers, which are three minutes, get put in people's bathrooms. So I'm all in favor of that, if that's what you decide to do.
Thank you.
I just wanted to point out that there are a couple of things that the town is also doing, which hopefully we can work together on. One is Make Water Work program that's done by Okanagan Basin Water Board. They gave out frisbees last year, and I have one in my office and I should have brought one in, but we're hoping to get some more. And what you do is you put the frisbee on the ground and on the, you know, the curved side up, and it catches water, and it has little dragations on the side, and it will tell you when you've got enough water. So it's a really good way, that was something else that you mentioned there. So I'm thinking that we should be asking the OBWB to purchasing some of these and giving them out. We also have a, sorry to somebody, we also have considered having a water ambassador this summer, and hopefully it would be a student or a university student to come and deal with, we think, some of the education and some of the things, the first thing that you said was that we needed to watch and take care of people that are not using the rules properly. And that's one of the reasons why we have put in this position for the summertime. So we are happy to work together with you. We think this is a wonderful project that you've got. And I'm going to open it up to anybody else on council that might like to ask you some questions or speak on it. Councillor Rhodes. And we're happy to have Councillor Rhodes back. He had a difficult time getting his truck ready to be back, but he's home, so that's good.
Thank you Mayor McCordoff. Way to go Hannah. Thanks very much for your comments. A very, very, very good presentation. You did really well. Often, as we sit here in our council chairs, we get delegations that come for a wide variety of different reasons. My favorite ones are when the youth of our community come here, and so I'm really, really happy that you're all here and presented. And I always like to say that, you know, if the future of Suyus, if it's in your hands, all of you, we're pretty lucky and I think things are going to go really well for us. So just wanted to pass that on to you. Great job and being engaged in that water conservation is just so important for our community. So I'm glad to see that you're, you know, you guys are fully engaged in it. It's going to be very beneficial, the work that we can do together over the next period of time. So way to go. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah, Councillor Youngberg. Good morning Hannah.
Good morning.
Great presentation.
Thank you.
Your public speaking skills are great. Right Emma? Good job. When's the deadline?
Our video has to be submitted by March eighth.
Okay. All right. And then when do you find out?
About two weeks later.
About two weeks. Well, good luck with that. And I certainly concur with Councillor Rhodes. It's just a great, just an asset to our community to see you all involved. It's great to see the youth.
Thank you.
Councillor Campbell.
I echo the same sentiments. Great presentation, but congratulations on getting this far. That's amazing, all of you. Congrats.
Thank you.
Can I ask, is there, you're going to send this in and then if you win something, you're going to come back and ask us for a further, or work together with us? Or how, what are the next steps on this? Can you?
Yeah, so if we are chosen for the semifinalists, we can move on to the finals where people vote for our video and we can win fifty thousand dollars in additional technology.
And I certainly hope that that happens. I'm now concerned about the actual meat of this and what you're going to do with helping to do water conservation in our town. Is there a group that might be involved in actually pursuing some of this? Would you like to help us? Or Mr. Geida, is there?
I'll speak to that.
Sure, sure. Thank you.
Mayor McCordoff and Councillors, thanks for having us in today. My goal as a teacher, regardless of whether we win, is to pursue this next fall with one of my classes. So I'll find a group of kids that are interested either in Science ten, or Biology eleven or twelve, and we'll certainly go forth with whatever we decide, win or lose. Like, this has just been a great experience for the kids. These kids are all doing this voluntarily. My class with them ended in January, and we've been meeting after school for the last couple of weeks, sorry, at lunch the last couple of weeks, on our own. They're giving up their free time to help with this, and I'm hoping, you know, some of them, when they're in Grade twelve, might still be interested in it, but I'm sure there's other kids that will get involved.
Well, that sounds terrific, and I can see that you have a plan to move this forward.
Absolutely.
So thank you very much to all of you, to you, Mr. Geida, and to the students for taking this very important issue on. I'm wondering if you noticed that on Friday, the town of Suyus received a grant from the tax, the
Gas tax fund.
Gas tax funding for two point four million, and we will contribute some.
Twinning of the rural eight and nine.
Yes, only Phase one, unfortunately. However, we have to get started on this. So we think that anything to do with water is of paramount importance, so we're very happy. And we look forward to hearing more from you and the group as you, and good luck.
Thank you.
I'm sure you'll do very well. So the students and teachers need to get back to class, so we, so we're going to thank them very much and allow them to get back to school. Thanks to all of you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you Peter.
And Nora, we now have a seat for you. I'm sorry there weren't quite enough chairs. Okay, our next presentation is from the Okanagan-Similkamene Healthy Living Coalition, and it's Angelique Wood and Julie Stetler. So, thank you.
Good morning, Your Worship and Members of Council. Thank you for welcoming us here this morning. I am Julie Stetler with Interior Health, specifically with our Healthy Communities program. And I'm pleased to be presenting alongside Angelique Wood, Coordinator of the Okanagan-Similkamene Healthy Living Coalition. We have two main intentions this morning. One, Angelique's going to provide an update of some of the activities of the coalition, and I hope to clearly make the connection about why the coalition and its work is important to Interior Health and our Healthy Communities program. So at Interior Health, we are committed to providing health services, and we're also committed to providing the health protection and promotion of health for our populations. On the screen, you'll see depicted the social determinants of health, which are the factors that affect health over the life course. And we know things that, such as beyond health services, so things such as transportation networks, community design, access to healthy food choices, strongly influence the health of our communities. And given this connection to health promotion, Interior Health strongly values the work with local governments. So our Healthy Communities action planning is also important to address the burden of disease in B.C. As you'll see depicted on the screen, approximately sixty percent of the burden of disease is attributed to chronic disease. Approximately one in three in B.C. has one or more chronic disease, and this consumes approximately eighty percent of our healthcare budget. So both the Ministry of Health and Interior Health demonstrate our commitment to health promotion. And you'll see up on the screen, this is taken from a policy document setting priorities for the B.C. health system from 2014, and you'll notice that prevention and health promotion is a priority area, and we're strongly seeing a shift from reactive to more proactive healthcare and getting more of our health services back into the communities where we know people are going to do much better. And so Interior Health, our goals and our mission statement clearly demonstrate our dedication to health promotion. Our goal number one is to improve the health and wellness of our populations. And a couple provincial partners that I think are important to mention, Healthy Families B.C. is the Provincial Health Promotion Strategy. B.C. Healthy Communities is a provincial nonprofit that provides the funding for Healthy Families B.C. And Plan H is a specific program administered by B.C. Healthy Communities designed for local governments, and Plan H works in collaboration with the health authorities, UBCM, and Healthy Families B.C. And most importantly, our communities, we consider to be our most valuable partners in the work of our health promotion. The map shows the Interior Health region and all of the areas we have partnership agreements with, as well as Healthy Living strategic plans. And a couple that are interesting to mention, and that, you know, wouldn't be possible without the partnerships and the work with the communities themselves, are the City of Enderby and Slatsey and Active Transportation Plan happened as a result of the partnerships, and a Healthy Food Security Strategy part of me in the City of Nelson, and we're currently working with the City of Kelowna on a Healthy City Strategy. And as a reminder, in 2013, the town of Osswayus, at the regular council meeting on February fourth, carried a motion that the town would partner with Interior Health to increase actions that will improve health of the community by reducing chronic disease and obesity, and join the Okanagan-Similkamene Healthy Living Coalition to create local and regional strategies to improve health as a means of implementing the partnership. So we hope that you are still willing to commit to the Okanagan-Similkamene Healthy Living Coalition and partner with Interior Health. And with that, I'll let Angelique take over to tell you some updates about the coalition.
Thank you.
Pass out some papers for you to hold on to. It's not even bedtime reading it. You're reading on your coffee break.
Thanks, everyone, for the opportunity to come and speak. My name is Angelique Wood, and as Julie mentioned, I'm the coordinator for the Okanagan-Similkamene Healthy Living Coalition. So a few of you I know were actually present at the inaugural forum that happened here in Suyus at the Watermark. That goes back to 2012, and I'll just give you a brief rundown of how we began. Our founding partners are, they include Interior Health, Penticton, the Penticton Indian Band, the Regional District, School District sixty-seven, and both UBC Okanagan and Okanagan College. The idea, as on the last page of that little brochure I've handed you, the idea is to take a number of different organizations that have different mandates but which have overlapping alignment in some areas. We know we're all working on trying to make better communities, healthier communities, and so trying to take an approach that gets out of the silos and moves us towards places where when we have similar objectives, we work together. And just seeing those high school students and very interested in promoting their work on our website and helping get the word out about the exciting work they're doing, to see young leaders coming in and talking to our established leadership and finding ways to work together to address an issue that is the most pressing issue of our time, is really exciting. So I'm happy to say that everyone of our communities has different things going on because we're not all the same. But obviously, within the Regional District, Okanagan-Similkamene, we have some similarities. And I'll just run through a little bit. This is a pilot project, which is in its third year, beginning our fourth year. We have gone through a small mini-grant award system, and that was essentially the different communities, Suyus did this, did a bit of a health scan, looked over what the assets of the community are, what are things that are already underway, and that was in part to be able to identify what else needs to be done. We had the inaugural forum. We've, in 2015, we did Fall Energizer, which was an opportunity for people to come together and talk about what they had done in their communities, kind of learn from one another, and hopefully speed up the ability which each community has to, when processes have been developed in one place, take it on. When there's paperwork that's not necessarily private or confidential, and it can speed up how quickly another community can benefit, we want to share our information so that we can make this a really healthy region in its entirety. Coming up, we've got a Youth Mental Health Summit, which youth in Penticton have been leading. That'll be in May. And in the summertime, a food security symposium, which we're working on with Penticton Indian Band. And Penticton Indian Band has been doing some amazing things that I think are going to be really interesting for some of our other communities to learn about, because they've taken a real systems approach and developed a garden where the produce excess is taken to their health center, where it's cooked in a nutritious way for people who typically wouldn't have a chance even to go out for dinner, getting a chance to share time with each other. And so social engagement and learning about nutrition and a whole bunch of things all tied in together, so it should be very interesting. I'll just go to the next slide. So I just wanted to talk a little bit about skin in the game, because it's always interesting for our leaders to know how things are happening. We began with seed funding from Interior Health. Regional District has funded us from 2012 to 2015 fifteen thousand dollars a year. So that fifteen thousand dollars comes to about thirty to thirty-five cents a household for most of the homes in the Regional District that are an average of two hundred thousand dollars. Interior Health has been supporting with staff. The predecessor to Julie is Betty Brown, and Betty and along with another of other people have contributed over a hundred and fifty thousand in-kind hours of their own. And then we've had leadership teams, students and faculty at UBC and OK College contributing almost ten thousand dollars to our project in all of our different communities. So what that's led to, in Oliver, we've had three teams of management students support Oliver and its food security initiative. Oliver's now at the place, even though one of the main leaders is about to leave on mat leave. She's just applying for a three-year funding cycle that, if successful, will mean both the Town of Oliver and Plan, or Canadian Food Action Initiative, will contribute forty-five thousand dollars each over a three-year period. So a full three-year work will be done on developing food security in the Oliver area with also the acknowledgement that Oliver doesn't function alone. I believe the plan is to try and incorporate the outline areas, so the electoral areas, try and work with the band as well. And we know that Oliver will become a pilot community for all the rest of us. So much of the work that will be done there, we're hoping will be templatable and we can use it as well in our communities. We've had a grad student from UVIC working with Summerland, working on Healthy Community scanning with them and developing their leadership group. And Summerland's actually got to a place where one of their planners and one of their recreation managers is sitting on their community, sorry, on their initiative, and they are working on having a philosopher's cafe this week coming up, and doing a lot to try and figure out where the community wants to go. So pretty interesting things happening there. We've had OK College help with both kinesiology students doing scans of their town. They're going to be doing work on food security this time round and hoping that their research will help us in our food security symposium, so much like your students here in Suyus, helping out with what you need to do. And then we've got a project that is hopefully going to come about, a woman working in mental health for the three Os originally, OK Falls, Oliver, and Suyus, but hoping to expand it through the entire Similkamene Valley. We recognize that this area, the whole South Okanagan-Similkamene, has one of the most depressed populations and also tied in with a huge number of seniors. And her project is essentially to develop some management tools developed by seniors for coping with mental health issues. Her project, if it comes to paths, will probably be worth about two hundred thousand dollars and will impact all of our communities in a really positive way. So these are the kinds of things that none of us could do alone, but which, working in association with other groups, we're able to sort of push through some of the barriers that can happen. And we're really excited and hopeful about what that promises for the rest of our region. So just a quick recap, in our Fall Energizer forum, we asked people, what are your top three takeaways? And the comments people made were the collective impact, the sharing of best practices, and building relationships. And we know that when we're in our communities, we tend to get really focused on what's up close. Sometimes taking a little bit more of a thousand-mile view helps us to look at what our strengths are and how we can benefit from the learnings of others. So if you folks have any questions for us or would like to participate in many ways, please follow up with us. There are contact information details, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Angelique and Julie, for presenting this to us. It's always heartening to see that people are sort of working together collectively and, you know, working on the health of our region. And I think our town is doing quite a lot. I think over at the Sonora Center, and Gerald Davis is on the committee, and he's quite involved with providing programs over there to build healthy communities. One thing I thought about, I was at the, had a tour of the prison, the correction center, a couple of weeks ago, and they have a large greenhouse there. Really an interesting thing to see because it's a double-decker so that at night they can bring the warm air from the top level down to keep the plants growing. And they're hoping to use a lot of that fresh produce in their kitchens. So, you know, just little things like that all come together and make, and make us all healthier, right? Everybody. So we certainly appreciate the work that you have done and that you continue to do, and obviously you're passionate about it. So thank you very much. Counsel, does anyone have any questions? Well, thank you, Angelique and Julie, for presenting this, and it just brings some of these things to the forefront, and so we all need to be aware and work together. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And our next presenter is the Local Immigration Partnership Council, and it's presented by Nora Hunt Haft, who is out of Penticton. And so thank you very much to Nora for presenting this to us.
Sorry.
That's okay.
We're just talking logistics. Whatever works. Good morning.
Thank you.
Thank you for having me, and it was great to hear the Interior Health as well, but then seeing that they're using, we just exchanged cards, they're using a system called Collective Impact, which we're also using as part of the Local Immigration Partnership Council. So really looking at how we cascade and work through different groups. So today, what I wanted to do is tell you a little bit more about the Local Immigration Partnership Council, and then specifically talk about some research survey, or research work that we did relative to employment and newcomers into our area. So the Local Immigration Partnership Council is actually fifty community leaders coming together from all levels of government, so throughout the South Okanagan-Similkamene, we have mayors from the different regions, we have employers at the table, employment networks like the Chambers of Commerce in different industrial areas, lots of nonprofit organizations, we have new immigrants there too, so make sure that we're working, not in a silo, but understanding from their perspective First Nations, Interior Health, Okanagan College, the school districts, things like that. So really, a big group of people, and we're working together as a group to reduce the time it takes for new immigrants to integrate both social Well, it can actually take, in our first year, we were formed in 2014, and in our first year, we did quite a bit of research as well, and we noted that it could take up to 15 years for newcomers to actually integrate into the community. And our, our desire to speed that up really helps employers access more valuable resources to help building their, their businesses and workplaces. And what we do know, again from that research, is that we're in the process of many businesses retiring in our areas. We do have a shortage of skilled workers, and research tells us that the net immigration must double to meet our labor market demands coming. So let's talk jobs, it's really just a snapshot report. I think you guys may have gotten a copy of it, and I'll leave a copy of it here for you. But it takes a high-level look at the qualifications and experience of the newcomers that we have coming into the area, and also comparing and looking at what the employment opportunities are. The main purpose of this was to really collect baseline data for our working group, who has a strategic priority to attract and sustain new immigrants to meet the workforce needs and business opportunities of our region. So the approach we took, we used a company called the James Lawrence Group, and we did the research between September and December of this year. And we worked with a group of employers, and, and we used both online interviews and, and personal one-on-one interviews. And we also did a literature review, so we didn't start from scratch. We looked at all the labor market research that we had in place for the South Okanagan from 2000, I think 2010 to 15, in those five years. So we really had some good base that we could overlay our information on top of. And what came out of it was four key themes. One is that the current labor force is not growing fast enough to meet our employers' needs for workers. New immigrants are an important source of skilled and experienced workers for the area. There are some key barriers that inhibit the integration of new immigrants into the regional workforce, and new immigrants and employers both want to be part of the solution. So we did see a real positive move that way. I've included a few quotes throughout the presentation, this one being from one of our new immigrants that we're interviewed, where he states, "I have two master's degrees in marketing and an undergrad in engineering. I have successfully completed online courses at UBC in project management since coming to Canada, and I'm looking for a marketing business development or general manager position." So just again, a bit of a quote to see the level of, of skills. Most of who we integrated, or most of who we interviewed could speak, read, and write English. They were a younger group, between 26 and 35 years, and the majority had a college degree or diploma. So if we actually looked at some of the numbers, if you scroll up, there, 81% that were part of our, in our findings or in our interviews, were held a college degree or diploma. Almost 70% already had at least two or more years of work experience from where they, before they moved to Canada. And again, 80% were in many of the in-demand sectors that we have in our region, so we were able to compare that. So trade, healthcare, accommodation, agriculture, public admin, and finance. About 25% of the new immigrants we interviewed were unemployed at the time. Partly that was because we actually targeted a group that were enrolled in our Skilled Connect program, so it may actually average a bit lower than that. But what we did find out is that it can take anywhere from two to five years for a new immigrant to find work in their field. And many that do find work in their field are not necessarily working at the same level that they were trained in their home country. So often you'll find nurses are working as care aides, accountants are working as accountant technicians, things like that, so. And one of the comments were, from a new immigrant, was, "I'll feel like I belong when I'm in the, in the community, when I'm working at the same level as when I left my home country." So they're, they're always looking for that level of productivity as well. Some of their barriers, and this was kind of interesting, because some of the barriers we found were, were almost perception. So although the majority of the people that we interviewed could speak, read, and write English, one of their barriers that they state for themselves is speaking English. So the best way I can explain that is because English is their second language, they never feel totally at that level, even though we might sit across the table and say, "Well, you speak, your English is great." But in their minds, it's not necessarily, and they still see it a barrier. And one of the best examples I can give is someone I worked with said to me once, she said, "I used to be funny." So in her home language, she's very quick and witty, but as English is a second language, she feels that she's lost that, lost that piece of herself. So they still themselves see it as a, as a barrier. Having the right skills, again, that's very much tied to, they may have been trained in skills that may not be accepted in Canada, so there, there's always that bridge, a barrier to update their skills. And transportation to the workplace is still one of the barriers that they see as well. Now, as far as the employers go, we identified eight different industry sectors that we chose from the Thompson Okanagan's list of largest employers. Again, kind of narrowed it down to trade, healthcare, accommodation, manufacturing, construction, agriculture, public admin, and finance. So those were, the, we wanted to have a nice breadth of industries that we interviewed. Keep going. What we did find is 66% noted that they will, the people that they will acquire, they will require certification or post-secondary education training, and 66% said that they right now are having difficulty filling their positions. And what they see looking out into the future is that only about 21% they expect to fill from the local labor force. So they're really looking outside the local labor force. They have had, they did note that they have had success in hiring newcomers, and these are just some examples of hiring controllers from the Philippines, electrical designers, supervisor, orchard supervisor from Tibet, early childhood from the Philippines, a lot of science researchers. So we are seeing a lot of successes with newcomers moving into the area. And the barriers that they stated was, again, shortage of skilled workers, English proficiency, shortage of housing, cultural fit, employment for their spouses, Canadian upgrades, and the process itself can be overwhelming. One of the gaps, when asked if they, what they, when we asked the employers what they thought about the skill sets of newcomers, a lot of them said that they didn't know, and then the ones that did respond said that they thought that they were fairly low. So this might be an actual gap or perceptual gap we have between the skill sets and what the employers think the skill sets are available. But 79% of the employers said that they're somewhat are very receptive to integrating new immigrants into their workforce. If you keep going. And most, both the immigrants and the employers exhibited, again, a willingness to work together to be part of this solution. 75, 79%, we were kind of interested if they thought there'd be value in an online registry, and there seems to be, where we would want to look at an online registry that could match opportunities with new immigrants and vice versa. So some of our next steps that we do have planned, one is a, a fast hack community mentoring program. And what this will do is if, as, if as an employer hires a new immigrant, they will be able to send that as a referral to us, and we will match them with a peer-to-peer mentoring program, so that they can be introduced into the community very quickly, in like 30 days. So there's lots of little things, nuances, that the, the employer may not have thought of, even things, one of the quotes we have is like, "Canadian Tire." Who, who would have known that you could go to Canadian Tire and actually get a whole bunch of household goods that you need for your place? Things like that. So we really plan to put together that mentoring program. The online directory is something that we're going to look into as well, as an, as an option for employers. And then the other thing that we have planned that we're quite excited about is a welcoming community summit that's going to be held in Okanagan College in June, actually June 18th of this year. And we're hoping to continue to send you more information with regards to that, but we will be bringing together keynote speakers, we'll have lots of different workshops for employers, we'll have some Canadian immigration legal information there, so it will be, plus we're going to add some celebration and things like that to it too. So it'll be a great event at Okanagan College this, this June. And then I just closed with a couple other quotes. This one from a new immigrant candidate was, "My dream country. From childhood, I wanted to come and settle here, and my dream is fulfilled." And this one from an employer, "New immigrants have a big potential to make a positive contribution to the region. As a community, we need to make sure that they have the opportunity to do this as quickly as possible."
So thank you very much, Nora. You're very enthusiastic about this, and I know that you've done a great job the last couple of years. I have been to a couple of the meetings, I'm not able to get to them all, but I, I certainly appreciate it. Can I ask, the Syrian refugee impact that's, that many of them are coming to Canada, are they, are you involved with, with that, or is that a separate issue? Or do you?
So the, the Local Immigration Partnership Council is actually led by the South Okanagan Immigrant Community Services, and, or what we call SOEX. And SOEX is involved relative to the refugees, primarily as a support center for the, the different groups that are sponsoring, the sponsoring groups. So as I understand it, there's about eight or nine sponsoring groups right now that are bringing in families. Two families have arrived so far, but we, you know, it's, it's a process. And we have hosted information sessions for the sponsoring groups and really trying to be that conduit. And of course, once they arrive, we have a series of, of support that we offer, like language classes and employment integration, and all our, all our services will be available to them as well.
So I know that the, we do have a family in Assoius, that a group of concerned citizens really did their homework, and, and I think it was about three months, and they had a family lined up and a house, and they've all been working really hard to try and help this family. But in order to succeed, you want to make sure you've got everything in place. And I was talking to one of the, the group the other day, the, the committee, and they said, "It's taking a lot of their time," and, and not that they're concerned about it, but, you know, it's, you want to make sure you've got everything done properly so that the family has the best chance of succeeding in moving here. Quite a culture shock, I'm sure. But making sure that they get to the banks and to the schools and, and driving them, because I assume that it's, that they, they cannot get a driver's license for a while, presumably they don't speak English quite well enough yet. I just, I, it's, it's a huge commitment from this group, and I think it probably is why it takes so a fairly long time to get immigrants in, you know, involved in the community and feeling comfortable, because there are so many issues that need to be done, right? I just see what they're doing here, and they're doing a fabulous job, but it's going to take a year for them to be, to hopefully have this family where they feel comfortable doing things on their own. So you have an, you have an office in Oliver and one in Penticton?
That is correct. And we do, but we do do outreach to the whole South Okanagan and Similkamene. Yes, absolutely. And many of those things, we do, some of those things were, we are a resource, because we do today for immigrants today, who, you know, we may have a mentor help them study for their driver's license, or we may, and we do language classes, and we do, you know, we have some daycare facilities, things like that. So all of that will, will help as well.
Okay. Counselor Rhodes.
Thank you, Mayor McCordell. Well, thanks, Nora, that was very informative. One of the mysteries that, that I've never really been able to ever figure out is, is the language barrier that so many of these individuals have when they arrive in our country and that kind of thing. I couldn't even imagine the challenges of trying to learn our language. I mean, most of us that speak English don't even know much about it. What kind of programs do you have? I know you touched on them a little bit, but there's such a wide variety of different kinds of languages from various countries and that kind of thing. How, how do you help with this process?
And we can have people from 15 different languages in one class. Yeah, it's, it's amazing. But we do do English as a second language classes. They're available at no charge for immigrants. We have different levels, so we have teachers that teach at different levels, so an introductory level, like one or two, and then three or four. And the other thing that we've started doing this year, that's a little different, is sector-specific training. So we've just finished one class and started a second class, and the second one is actually based out of Oliver for the medical English. So although they may have a fairly good grasp on English, the, all the medical terminology in English they may not have, and so we're doing a class like that so that it will help them be more successful in getting into care aide and nursing training and things like that. So we're starting to look at sector-specific. We've had some interest from the wine industry to do some, some sector-specific training just for people from teams of people in the wine industry, mainly so that that can help them not continue, they work there already, but to actually get promotions and move up relative to their work. So we're, we're starting to see some interest in that, which we really like to see too. So it's all, there's all different levels, yeah.
Thank you very much.
And interestingly enough, you know, we have one couple in one of our advanced that are retired, that have been immigrants for probably 30 years, ran businesses in Vancouver, retired here, and now feel that they have the opportunity and the time to really improve their English. So we get all, all kinds of levels.
Counselor Youngberg?
Just wondering, that very thing, if you're using any of the immigrants in the South Okanagan that can help the new immigrants?
Yeah, yes, we do. And we also have a very active volunteer program and a community connections program that reaches out, and many of our volunteers are, are new immigrants, or, not new, but immigrants, you know.
That have been here for a while, that have the experience.
So our, our mentoring program is actually going to be a peer-to-peer. So if somebody moves here from England, we'll match them from someone from England. If they move here from, from China, we'll match them from China, so that they have that cultural background, and then they can introduce them quickly into all the opportunities of our region.
And so to quickly find you, go immigration, possibilities, partnerships, no, just go immigration on the internet?
To find us.
And find your office and your phone number?
Yes, it's the, the South Okanagan Immigrant Community Services is the website that we have up right now. It is our plan that the Local Immigration Partnership will also have its own website, but right now, we're under the SOEX website.
I just had a couple of indications from local people, they just had a hard time finding it. So I just, I just wondered, because we, I didn't know where your office was, and I had no idea who to contact. I was talking to Gail Scott.
I will leave you some cards. I know that you may have got, I'm going to leave you some of these too. This is just an infographic that kind of summarizes some of the data that we got from the employment report that we did. So I'll leave you some of those that you can share, and I could certainly leave you our card with our website.
Well, that's okay. We know, I know now how to find you. The other part that was interesting.
SOEX.ca.
Okay, yeah.
SOEX.ca.
I guess, yes. Was, the other question was, the upgrading to a professional immigrating from another country. They, I'm sure you're, you were working with provincial government to speed this process up, because it's been...
Yeah, we're trying.
A little bit of a problem with, you know, a couple of people locally that, you know, they, they need their credentials updated. But I'll certainly, the next time I see them, I'll tell them to get ahold of you.
And it's interesting, because it's, it's a, it's a big question, and some of it is not just based on the federal provincial government, but it could be based on the association. So the Nursing Association or different associations, and they're the ones too that we need to rally around. So some associations have taken a very, have taken, like the Trucking Association, so for truck drivers, there's going to be this desperate need for truck drivers. So that association went ahead and actually completed a, a whole report that says, "If you're hiring a truck driver from Jamaica, these are the skills that they will have, these would be what they may be missing. If you're hiring a truck driver from China, this is what they'll have." So they've actually, as an association, really made lots of leaps and bounds on how to, how to do that crossover and integration, and what to, what to know, what credentials you'll know that they will have from different countries. So, yeah, I can't say it's all federal government, because a lot of it is associations that put the rules, put the rules into, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Well, thank you for the work that you do, and for coming and making us aware of it.
Thank you.
That's, it's very important.
Thank you for being part of our partnership.
No problem. Sure, go ahead, hand those out. Well, thank you for the work that you do and for coming and making us aware of it.
Thank you.
That's, it's very important.
Thank you for being part of our partnership.
No problem. Sure, go ahead, hand those out.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, I'll keep that.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And last but not least, sorry Sandy, to make you wait all this time. Hope you learned something while you were sitting there listening to everybody else. This is Sandy Crotto, who is the, the Chief Financial Officer for the Regional District. So, thank you for coming Sandy and presenting the budget.
Yes, thank you for having me. I just wanted to come and give you all a quick update on the Regional District budget, the process overall and really where the budget's at and, most importantly, what it means for Asuys at the end of the, of the date. So, just to give you a quick rundown, I also want to, I'll start with the Regional District budget, but we're also the Hospital District, so at the very end, I have a short presentation for the Hospital District budget as well. We are separate entities, so we present those separately. So, for our budget process, unlike municipality, we don't have a single budget. We have to run budgets for every single service that we have. That, this year, that's about 143 services that we're running budgets for. We have to keep our budget separate because different people participate in different, in different services. So, the only way to ensure that those who are participating are paying is to keep those budgets separate. We start our budgets in about October. We send our budgets out to our departments and our managers and ask them to create a budget. We only allow them a baseline budget going out and they can add contractual increases, negotiated union increases, those types of things. But, anything that they want to do differently or present to the board to try as a new enhancement to the service, they have to keep outside of their budgets. They bring those forward, or we bring those forward to our Budget Committee, which for us is our entire board, as what we call program changes. That allows us to make sure that the board is very aware of anything new or different that we're proposing, because with all those budgets, things can get lost in the numbers sometimes. So, we make sure that those come forward separately so that the board has the opportunity to be aware of what we're proposing and most of all, basically buy into that, allow us to put that into our budget by acknowledging that it is something new and that's something that we'd like to add. We went, had about 15 budget change requests this year, which we went through with our board in detail over our three Budget Committee meetings through November and December. That budget process brought us to a draft budget that we brought to the board in January. They gave us first reading of that budget, which really is, really puts it into a draft form and it will stay in that draft form until it's approved by the board in March. That draft budget gives me the opportunity to do exactly this, to come out through the Regional District to the different municipalities and electoral areas and talk to people about what's in the budget, what it means for them, and to get feedback to take back to our board on what, if there's any issues or any concerns within the budget that they would like brought forward. We must have a budget by legislation approved by March 31st, so we will be bringing our budget back to our board by, the first week meeting in March, which will be March 10th this year. Hopefully, getting approval at that point, but there's, it's never final, so we have final reading, which could be as late as the second meeting in March. So, our budget overall looks like this for this year. We're sitting at about $37.4 million, not much different from last year at 37.1. We have about $27.6 in operating and about $9.8 million in capital expenditures. The capital that relates to the Asuys area this year is in relation to the arena. There's about $95,000 in that total for the arena, with a couple of larger projects in there, including replacing the lighting at about $40,000 and a Hockeyville upgrade at $25,000. The municipal debt payments is not a number we include in our budget, but we are legislative required to report it. It is the, the debt that municipalities such as yourself are taking through the Regional District. You're required through the Municipal Finance Authority to borrow through us. So, this is the debt payments that relate to all the municipalities throughout the Regional District that have taken debt through us. Asuys' share of that municipal debt payment annually is about $102,000. So, some of our services that we run, we speak of different types of services. For Asuys, you participate in what we call regional services, which are those that are all, all of our municipalities and all of our electoral areas share costs in. Those are things like general government, which is really the running of the Regional District, the solid waste management plan, the 911 emergency plan, emergency call, emergency planning and regional trails. You also have joint services that you share with Electoral Area A and those include the museum property debt and the arena, of course. Some, some of the factors that affect your requisition every year are assessments. Assessments always come into play because that determines your share of those regional and shared services. Asuys has approximately eight and a half percent of the entire assessed values within the Regional District. So, that means for those regional services, you're paying about eight and a half percent of the total costs of that, because it's allocated based on your assessments. The other part that comes into play besides assessments is how the assessment changes from year to year. Asuys' assessments are up about 4% from last year. That's a little bit less than the Regional District average of about 4 and 3/4%. So, what that would imply is that if I was collecting the same amount of money from one year to the next, your share of those regional services would decline just a little bit because your assessments haven't moved as quickly as the rest of the Regional District. If you'll excuse me for one second. So, yes, you, you would have come down a little bit, very slightly in the amount from one year to the next. As I mentioned at the beginning, some of those things that we do differently each year, we bring forward as those regional change, program changes. There are three regional ones that we brought forward for 2015. The first being the Lean Program. This is really a process mapping analysis approach that was started with the manufacturing companies in Japan, looking at how to do more with less, how to find efficiencies in, in your processes that exist. In 2015, we asked our board for $10,000 to begin that process of evaluating if that would work for the Regional District. We had some great successes with that. We did what we call kaizen in one of our, our subdivision approval processes, which we found ways to save time and find, make it a better experience for the customer, try to find ways to not make it quite so cumbersome. From that success, we've come back to the board this year and asked for $20,000 to continue down that process and actually have a couple of our staff trained in, in the kaizen processes so that they can continue to train more staff in our areas and, and provide a resource to our member municipalities who may want to undertake similar process mapping evaluations. So, we're very excited about that. We also had some requests from our regional trails for staffing change. They're looking not for more staff, but a different type of staffing. In the past, we've used students on our trails program. Students are usually university students, so they come to us in late May and leave probably mid-August when we, we have to let them go back. The regional trails group would like to change that to a seasonal worker, so we'd have someone there starting in April and working through to October. So, someone on the trails longer, for a longer period of time. That change in staffing is adding about $20,000 to the Regional District budget for 2016. We also have a regional growth strategy request. Under the regional growth strategy program, in 2015, we were required to do a mandatory plan review. Out of that plan review have come some recommendations. So, there's been a request for $50,000 for the budget for 2016 to start implementing some of those recommendations. The recommendations are still coming back to the board for approval. The $50,000 is a placeholder. The exact amount could be lower than that, but at this point, until they come back to the board to determine exactly which of the recommendations they want to put forward, we have the $50,000 sitting there at this point. So, some other areas of the requisition that you'll see, and when we get to the totals, is some things have gone up, some have gone down. A decrease in our general government request for you, that's about an $18,000 requ- a decrease in the amount we're requesting. That comes about largely from, if you recall, last year, we came to the board and asked for, to the council and asked for a one-time increase for our renovations at 101 Martin Street. That was approved. So, that was a one-time blip in the budget that pushed the budget requisition up last year. That's, renovations aren't done, but the money's been collected for that. We're wrapping that up hopefully in April and May. And we also have real allocated some salaries. So, because we do everything by individual budgets, our staff are required to track their time in everything they do every day to the service that they're working in. And in the budget process, we reevaluate where the budgets are being allocated and it was determined that some of the budgets that were going into the general government area, where municipalities were paying as well, have been redirected to the Electoral Area Administration, which is also the running of the Regional District, but the running of the Regional District as it applies only to the electoral area, so that municipalities aren't paying for that cost. So, we've reallocated some money away from what the municipalities are paying for and more into the electoral areas. We've had an increase in the 911 emergency call system of about $11,000 in your requisition side. That's because the 911 project that was began last year, actually began late 2014, is now completing and we're seeing new operating costs in relation to that. So, the operating costs are putting that budget up. Just to note, we'll also see another increase in that budget next year when the debt servicing for the budget, for that service comes on. There was about $1.3 million borrowed for that project and it's, we haven't gone into long-term debt for that yet, so the actual full-on borrowing costs will come into effect in 2017. There's an increase in the regional trails. As I mentioned, there was the request for more staffing, but there's also been, we've, we're successful in receiving a Canada 150 grant for the KBR reconstruction. So, that's a matching funds grant. We got $125,000, but we also need to have $125,000. And so, in 2015, the first phase of that project is about $50,000. So, it's a $50,000 grant, but there's also a $50,000 increase in our, in our requisition to offset that. And as I mentioned, the regional growth strategy is about adding, the increase from that is adding about $3,000 to your requisition amount. Your shared services, your arena, your share of the arena is up about, up about $30,000. There's not a lot different happening in the arena budget at this point, other than we are seeing a decrease in the prior year surplus. Because we keep everything individual in budgets, if money is collected in one year and not used, it becomes a surplus for the next year and that can fluctuate from year to year as, as things happen within a budget. So, the real change for 2016 that we're seeing for the arena is just a change in that prior surplus. So, your overall requisition for 2016 looks like is up from 732,000 to about 769,000, so about a $37,000 increase overall. As you'll see, the regional services, there were ups and downs, but the overall increase is about $7,000. Your largest increase is coming from the arena increase. And we do, as a Regional District, collect money for other boards. So, for Steril and Sect Release and the Okanagan Basin Water Board, they put their budget requests through to our board. We really, as a Regional District, don't have any say on those budgets, other than that members of our boards sit on, on their, on both of those boards. It's a flow through for us. We collect the money, we turn it back, right back over to Steril and Sect Release and OBWB to do their work in the following year. So, what then does that look like for your average households? For 2016, the estimated tax rate for Regional District services, and again, this is only one element of your total tax requisition, this is just the Regional District portion, will be about 52 cents per thousand or about, about $152 per household, which is the, for Asuys, the BCA assessment says your average house is about $293,000. That's up slightly from last year at about $147, so about a $5 per household increase. And this is just meant to give you a somewhat of a representation. It's not extremely, it's not completely accurate as, your museum is actually a parcel tax, not a rate tax, but it, it gives you a sense of where this, most of the money is going. And that's the quick on the Regional District portion. It's, I'll just carry on to the Hospital District if that's all right?
Sure, please go ahead.
Okay, great. So, the Hospital District budget, as I said, we are a separate entity. We have the same board, but we are a completely separate entity and we budget in that fashion. We, we don't consider one budget versus the other when we're, we're developing them. We, the Hospital District is there to provide capital funding for, that could be equipment or construction. We, we budget and support 40% of interior health capital requests in any given year. So, the budget for 2016 is up from 20, the requisition amount is up from 2015 and it will continue to go up. In 2014, with the announcement of the Penticton Regional Hospital Care Tower Project, the board at that time gave us direction to continue to increase the requisitions for the hospital annually by $5 for the average household. And the average household for the Regional District in this case, right now, is $305,000. So, that, this year will be $101 for that household. Last year, it was 96. The sole purpose of that annual increase, continuing to bump that up, was to put any extra monies that we could raise from that into reserves, to build those reserves as much as possible before the Hospital Care Tower was complete. It's a $305 million project. Our share will be about $122 million. We're looking to put as much money into those reserves to, to lower our borrowing costs on the, on the outside of that. So, we expect to have upwards of $50 million in reserves by the end of 2018 to offset that project. Hopefully, a little bit more if we can have our investments do very well. So, what, your share of that $5.8 million of requisition this year, again, it's based on your percentage of the total assessed value, so you have about eight and a half percent of that. So, you're paying, Asuys is paying about $495,000 towards the hospital budget this year. That means because that, for your house, your average house of $293,000, that's about $98 per household. That's a little bit less than the $101 that you saw on the other screen, but that's because your assessed values are a little less. Last year, that would have been about $93 for the average household. It's interesting to note that of that $98, about $71 goes into reserves. So, just over 70% of our total requisition each year is building those reserves for future years. Interior Health also comes annually to our board with a list of projects that relate to the current year that they have priorities for throughout the region. This year, their, their request is for about $1.7 million. That's our 40% of their requests. There's projects throughout the Regional District. Last year, that was about $1.6 million. The board has the opportunity to talk with regional, with Interior Health about those projects and get feedback from them. They came, I think it was our pre, last board meeting, to, to explain the projects, the priorities that they've put forward for those. So, this year, it's about $1.7 million, which is included in that overall requisition that we have at $5.8 million. And that's my quick run-through. Just, we encourage everyone to take a look at the budget. It's on our website. It's on our RDOS website. You'll find a blue banner that says Popular Links. It's, it's on there. It is a large document. It's about 350 pages long. We have structured the electronic document though, so, so you can find areas that are of interest to you, Area A, Asuys, whatever it might be. It's a little easier to move through those. So, we encourage you to take a look and provide us with any questions or feedback. Thank you.
Thank you very much Sandy. It just amazes me that Sandy goes out to every, every one of the six communities and the eight regional districts and presents an individual budget and she keeps it all straight. So, I think that that's pretty amazing. And I was at the Area A one a couple of weeks ago and Sandy did that one as well. So, I, we thank you very much for, for bringing this to us in a very, you know, readable way. And I will just see if anybody has any, any questions about this. No, you, you've all figured it out. Good. Well, well done. Thank you very much Sandy. I appreciate the time that you take to come around to every area and explain it to us.
My pleasure. Thank you.
Next on our list is the Provincial Emergency Program Act Discussion. Mr. Romanco?
Yeah.
Oh, excuse me. I'm sorry, Ms. Van Veenen, it's you. Both of your names are on it, that's why.
Thank you. The attached letter from Naomi Yamamoto, the Minister of State for Emergency Preparedness and accompanying discussion paper on the Legislative Framework for Emergency Management in British Columbia, were received on January 11th, 2016 and reviewed by staff. This discussion paper has been sent to all local governments to provide feedback through an open consultation process. The formal responses are being requested before 4:00 PM on February 19th, so that's given us a really short deadline from today. After reviewing the discussion paper, it was felt by staff that there are two proposed amendments that may have significant impact on the town of Asuys and its citizens and warrant further questions to the province. Firstly, under Discussion Six, Ministerial Authority to Direct Emergency Planning on Page 12. It is being considered that the Act be amended to provide for the addition of authority for the minister responsible for the Act to make an order requiring a local authority to change its local emergency plan, where the minister has reviewed the plan and recommended modifications. This is quite concerning for the following reasons. Most, if not all, local governments should have their own emergency plan already completed, based on the needs of the area, what the risks are and hazards are for that community. The proposed amendment to give the minister authority to require a change to the local government's emergency plan does not give specific reasons as to when or why this requirement can be made, so basically, it appears to give arbitrary empowerment. A change to an emergency plan could be costly and take significant staff time, depending upon the changes being required, which could be very taxing on a smaller municipality. There is no mention of an opportunity for appeal or even further consultation with the local government before an order to change the emergency plan is made. It appears that the province does not have faith in the local governments to have plans that are specific to the needs of their communities. It appears that the province does not have faith in the local governments to have plans that are specific to the needs of their communities. Currently, the minister has the authority to review and recommend changes to a local emergency plan. The concern is that the minister does not have authority to require that a local authority make changes to their plans in situations where a cooperative approach has not been productive to address a significant issue with the plan. If the province insists on having this authority, there should be clear guidelines as to when the order can be made and giving timelines that are reasonable to comply with these orders. For instance, it would be unreasonable for the minister to order a change to the plan to be completed in a two-month period, especially for a small municipality. It would also be a budgetary issue, which would mean an order should give the local government at least one year or more to comply. The second concern is Discussion 10, Evacuation Orders. The proposal is to consider adding authority for police to apprehend any person who refuses to comply with an evacuation order issued under a declared state of emergency for the purpose of taking the person to a place of safety. This includes giving the police the right of entry and use of reasonable force to enforce an evacuation order. Limit the period of apprehension to be no longer than reasonably required to take a person to a place of safety, and authority for the province in a state of a provincial emergency or a local authority in a state of a local emergency to order a person who has been apprehended to pay the costs incurred by police in taking the action to enforce the evacuation order. This is a concern for the following reasons. Some people prefer to stay near their homes, to tend to animals or livestock, or to ensure security taking on the risks that they may not be able to get out. If the action is taken, what are the resources required to ensure the security of all properties affected, and how will this impact the liability of the local government, should there be a breach of security of the properties during an evacuation and a person was forcibly removed from their property? How will the province or local government collect the costs that are to be paid by the persons apprehended? Should we be charging people for being apprehended? What if mental health issues were the cause of having to apprehend someone rather than them leaving on their own accord? And is this only to take place in case of immediate peril to the person or long before that is an issue? There seems to be some legal implications that were not addressed and likely warrants further review. This makes sense if there was immediate peril to the resident not wanting to evacuate, however, if this apprehension can be made before there was immediate peril to the person, at what point should it be done? The other change, changes being proposed to the act do not appear to have enough effect to the, to address in this report. The two items being brought forward are for council information and consideration as to whether it wishes to provide comment on either the proposed new minister powers or the proposed evacuation order changes. The options being suggested are, number one, that a submission be made to the province regarding the proposed changes to the minister's authority to direct a change to an emergency plan. Two, that a submission be made to the province regarding the proposed changes to the evacuation orders. Or, three, that no submission be made to the province on the discussion paper. Staff recommend Options One and Two, these are significant changes that staff believe require further information from the province and possibly further review or consultation before the changes to the act are finalized.
Well, thank you very much, I think you make some good points there, so I did have a look through it. Counselor King.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, I'd like to recommend Options One and Two, and really would like to thank staff for such a thorough report and going through it, that the impact this could have on small communities.
Is there a secondary? Counselor Rhodes.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm seconding it.
You're seconding it, thank you. Okay, did anybody want to speak to this then? And we, all we're doing is...
You would have to move it on to the council's agenda this afternoon.
Right, so that's what you're...
Okay, move it to this afternoon.
Is there, is there anybody that wants to speak to this before we consider moving it? Yes, Counselor Youngberg.
Thanks, Jeanette and everybody else who participated in this, it's really a major concern to us, of course, in the housing business, because this was a total, huge problem in Rock Creek and in the Bridesville and Midway area, where some people were not allowed to stay on their property, to protect their animals. And every bit of improvement that they had done to their property, and there was really no need for the evacuation as soon as they had mandated it. So, I'm really glad to see these changes and I'll support that.
And I think that we do have a good emergency plan here, which Ms. Van Veenen looks after, and, and I think we're quite well-versed in, in what we need to do and, and how to do it, so I'm certainly in favor of these changes. Counselor Rhodes.
Thank you. This deadline, this time period that they've allowed us to scrutinize this 27-page document is, it's almost incomprehensible that it would be that way, I mean, this is such an important issue, is there any way of working a, a comment into our submission that this is not acceptable? I mean, we, you know, you need time to evaluate and, and consider all of the various things that are in that report, and just to land this thing on one day and then request it, you know, I think about five weeks later, it's not acceptable. I think there should be a negative, a comment made by us about that particular thing as well, so.
Yes, and, and in speaking with Dale Cronenbush, who's our, the Emergency Services Manager out of the Regional District, he has spoken to other municipalities that felt the same thing, and they were going to be making comments through the UBCM as far as timing and giving municipalities more time to respond to these discussion papers.
Well, we, we have an opportunity...
We can also include in our comments, but they, but they have also collectively put something to the UBCM, so, but we should also enforce it in our comments back.
I think that would be important.
So, are we going to, in, are you going to write a letter to bring back this afternoon, or are we just going to say that we'd like this, if we decide to go that route, that we would like this, a letter written, which would include that? Is that correct?
That's right, yes, the, the, the motion this afternoon would direct the corporate director to develop a letter with the recommenda, you know, the, the comments, and then it would go to the minister and, under the, under the mayor's signature.
Okay. Anybody else have any, did you have something?
Just a question, would that, then, can we send that to UBCM as well? I, I agree with that, I think it should be on the floor there as well. Is that a matter of procedure, or is it, or can you just make that recommendation in the letter?
Counsel?
That it be Florida UBCM.
I think the proper process would for you to send that to SILGA as a resolution, and then that would be forwarded through them to the UBCM.
I see, okay.
Yeah, this is a common occurrence with the provincial government, many discussion papers come out that seem to influence municipal jurisdictions with very short timelines, it's almost as if they don't understand that we, you know, councils, most councils only meet a couple of times a month, they're into an important part of the whole process. And we need time, we're, you know, many municipalities are, are, are working at their, at their limits, and we need time to assess these things. And it, to me, it just speaks to the, to the lack of a, of a proper relationship between, and respect between the province and the municipal's areas.
I do know that one of the directors for SILGA had, asked me the other day if, if it would be appropriate to come to council, not specifically on this issue, and I think it would be before the SILGA meeting in Kelowna, and I said absolutely to phone and set up an appointment. So, perhaps at that time, we could mention that this is of a concern to us, and we could certainly find out how to forward this or put it on their agenda, so that they know we're concerned. Counselor Rhodes.
If I could just, you know, maybe clarify what, what my comments were, I think it's totally appropriate for us to be critical of that time period, and even though it may go through the SILGA-UBCM process, it's very, very important that we include that in our comments about our concerns in our community.
Good. So, the, the recommendation was to include Options One and Two along with Counselor Rhodes' comments, and that was seconded? Okay. All in favor? Thank you, so that will be brought to this afternoon's meeting. Thank you. I believe that's, that's all we have on the agenda this morning, so could I have a, a motion, please, to adjourn the meeting? That would be Counselor Youngberg, Counselor King, all in favor. Thank you very much to everyone, and we will take a...